November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Please stand your open pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have a very big agenda today, for once. Uh, everyone got a copy of their minutes? Which... Melinda hardly had to tape anything, right?
No. It was a decent month last fall.
(laughing) I'm being very sarcastic there. Um, I'm sure everybody's had a chance to read this. Any questions or changes? If not, any motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve then.
Thank you, Isaac. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
You can make it better. Let's go around the room?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Okay, awesome. Yeah, that's a heck of seven minutes. Good job. As I have to say. Okay, treasure report? Any questions for Melinda on the items on the treasure report?
I don't know, I couldn't read them.
The treasure report?
Mm-hmm.
Want, you want my copy?
No, I understand this one, so I should probably...
So we got more money in savings?
Yeah.
For interest?
Well, I know.
(laughing) Okay, we'll move down to bills for payment. Any line items that anyone has a question on? Do you have any line items?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Traffic Safety Supplies shop?
No, it wasn't thirty-six then.
Okay, okay.
It was the court appointed... Did you say twenty-six?
It's twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay. I was just...
That's if the court appoints an attorney for somebody, for defendant, right? And we have to reverse for that attorney?
And the amount did go up. It used to be a hundred and twenty dollars, and now it's three hundred and thirty.
That's why I was questioning that.
Yes, it did go up.
Now, do we get that back? Or we...
I don't think we do.
Why do we have to have a court-appointed attorney?
Because it's a charge.
No, the defendant got a court-appointed attorney. When he gets his free lawyer in court?
Yeah.
It's cost us money for his free lawyer.
So it's now three hundred?
Apparently so, yeah.
It's gone up.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's because it's a charge under the town ordinance, which relieves to incarceration. And so, because he's being denied a constitutional right to liberty, he gets a court-appointed attorney. And the town has to pay for that in enforcing the ordinance. And it used to be ninety dollars an hour with a cap of a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. I think it's gone up to whatever the hourly rate is, but then it's a three hundred and thirty dollar tax. It hasn't been increased in like thirty years.
Sometimes there's a way around that, if we can, but in some cases, we can't get around it.
If they charge under the state code, then the town doesn't get charged.
That's what, that's what we try to do, we try to charge under state, or sometimes we can get around that.
Yes, I know, I always... They post, yes, okay, thank you. For clarifying.
But like, all the traffic violations and everything?
Yes.
That doesn't come with incarceration, so they don't get a court-appointed attorney for that?
Right.
Usually.
Right.
Unless it's something really serious.
Right.
Any other questions? And any motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve. Hey, who else?
Thank you, Sharon. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll go around the room?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Awesome. Okay, Chief, you got anything for us today?
Absolutely. Uh, we got the holiday... The holiday patches, uh, Christmas patches. For, for Monday, so if you want to see them, they're packed up to here. Uh, secondly, I finally got the accident contract finalized. And the council approved, we need to work with the contract. Uh, first year, full payment in two thousand twenty-six, when the contract starts, is sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-four and ninety-five cent. And then, two thousand twenty-seven will go up to twenty-four thousand, three hundred and five. The contract will begin again in January twenty-third.
What was the total value of that contract?
Total is current thirteen thousand, six hundred and five, thirty-one cents.
What was it when you had the car payments? It was like fifty thousand and what?
It was, it was roughly a hundred and fifty-five thousand.
So we save about forty or fifty thousand a year for the car payment?
The in-car cameras were fifty thousand dollars, probably, those, I feel like. The, the, the in-car cameras, we obviously use the live camera, but it's connected to us, it goes everywhere we go.
So do you have a motion on that today, I'm assuming?
If you have a question, or if you want to see the contract, I have it listed.
Anybody on the please screen who want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Sarah. Do you have a second?
Second.
Another one, please?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, awesome. Thank you.
And that's for next year's budget.
That is at that was my assumption.
That's for July first of...
The first payment will need to be made in January twenty-six.
Oh, in January twenty-six?
The sixteen, the sixteen thousand will need to be made by, I was told, by the end of January twenty-six.
We'll have, we'll have to do a budget, have to ask you on a budget, we have things to do. Well, no, if it's...
It's sixteen thousand.
No, it's only, it's only one percent, so yeah.
Yeah.
So we won't have a real, we won't have a budget. I'm a little worried the budget used to be. (laughing) It used to be one. It used, it used to be that way. Okay, um, anything else, Chief?
Uh, that's it.
Um, public works, AC, I don't think you have a lot for us today.
I don't have a lot for work. I spend a lot of time on zoning inquiries, zoning violations, discussions with water users after the letter was sent out, and working on the financial report, our portion of financial report. Do want to mention a couple of paving projects that VDOT did and found Church Street was done, and they're also doing or have done some of the streets in Timbercrest subdivision as well. Some of those kind of popped up. One of those at least popped up kind of unexpectedly. I think they must have some extra funds that they put towards it, but we didn't kind of short notice on that. Had a couple, some discussions or emails with VDOT, trying to get that figured out. We can get a little bit more notice, or get on the schedule, or be notified of what their schedule is going to be for the year, so we know what to have, what happens is when we get into those. If we need risers for the manholes or the valve boxes, we don't keep all of that stuff in stock. We might have one or two, but when you're going an entire street, you might have multiple. So we were kind of, Chris was kind of in a crunch to try to get that stuff ordered in before they started paving. So we tried talking to VDOT, see if, I mean, they're kind of at the mercy of the contractors too. Contractors kind of pop in when they're available, so I know they don't have so much that they can share with us.
Do you think we're on back to you yet?
Not yet, not yet. Last month's meeting, council discussed and approved a lot division on Church Street that is part of the colors estate, and is contingent upon the true acreage of the property being agreed on by the seller's council and the county attorney, and it appears that matter has been settled.
I got one more question for you about it.
Okay, but we're getting close to that, where the acreage has been figured out, so hopefully that one moves in. And then, at the December meeting, there will be two items on the agenda to address for property that's located at the corner of Church Street and Community Circle. Both items are going to be discussed by the planning commission at their meeting next Thursday. And one will be lot line revisions. It's not any, it's not, there aren't any new subdivision of lots, but they're going to be moving some of the lot lines around that'll make them much cleaner. And then a conditional use public hearing for, we had an application come in just today for duplexes for one of those lots. There currently is going to be one, and so single-family homes or duplexes are allowed with a conditional use in that. So that'd go to the planning commission and the council, and planning commission for a joint public hearing next Thursday.
Are you talking about the ones on the very end, or the new ones you're dividing up towards that old, that old?
It's, it would be the lot, the one lot would be where the old building sits right on the corner of Church and Community Circle. And then the other lot would be behind that on Community Circle.
Okay, okay. So nothing's going on with the one at the very end, we were picking up duplexes?
The far end, nothing's, nothing's happening with that one yet. And then, I sent out to the council, and we'll get it posted on the town's social media web and website. But there is a second neighborhood meeting scheduled to be held this coming Tuesday, November eighteenth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty PM at the community center for the solar farm proposed, or the ideal concept of the solar farm. So this will be, this one's at a slightly more opportune time for people to be able to attend instead of in the middle of the night.
So it's Tuesday, the eighteenth, at five-thirty, seven-thirty?
Yep. And that's all I have on my list unless council has any questions. Oh, um, we had a few residents that came in before the meeting. We are here to proceed with that street light question. I sent out about the street light out on intersection of railroad and Cameron Boulevard. I just wanted to verify with them that it was that, we were all thinking the same, the right location, and it was. So we'll get, I would go ahead to proceed with that project. And that's all that I have.
Awesome.
Any questions?
Any, any more questions, right?
Uh, we can go to order.
Okay.
We can go to order.
Oh, that skips off?
Business and Industry.
Oh, man, check them off. Check them off waiting.
And the only thing on Business and Industry is the Tractor Supply Grand opening. It was a nice event, a perfect day for it. Thanks to Sharon for making some remarks, and for the other council members and planning commission members that showed up for the grand opening. Everybody seems excited about that.
The person that made this mark's got a vote right.
I know, it was red.
Now can I go to Parks and Rec?
Now Parks and Rec.
(laughing)
We have the, the annual winter festival we held the weekend of December sixth and seventh at the American Legion Park. Hours on Saturday will be from ten AM to six PM, and Sunday will be from one PM to five PM.
Are we going to have a tree lighting outside?
I think it's planned for the evening of, this is the Saturday, six.
Someone else.
That's all that I can think of on Parks and Rec.
Finance? Nothing yet.
Um, now waiting to hear back from the auditors so I can pick up the financial reports, and I'll get those out there by the, I would expect it with P in the next several days, and I'll get that out there by the... So you eat your Thanksgiving dinner with the turkey and that really heavy deal, and then sit down and read your financial report. It's the best way to do it.
(laughing)
Well, I was going to mention here in finance, the Living Waters subdivision, the county just filed their suit on the outstanding taxes that are on, so I got served with the county attorney this morning with that lawsuit. So the town's owed about twenty-three thousand, the county's owed like a hundred and sixty-five thousand. So they'll do a judicial foreclosure to sell that property. It'll take months by the time they send another notice and everything, but absent them paying it off, it would be, they'll go to auction, and I'm sure there will be local developers interested in acquiring that property, I don't think. So hopefully something happens in two thousand twenty-six with that property. If I remember, isn't that already subdivided into all the little lots? Yes. So they have to sell each lot, or can they just sell one big? They, so there's a couple different phases, and so anything that is individually, like individual lots, they... I don't want to speak for them, it'll be up to the attorney that represents the county for these, which is Grant Penrod. He could try and sell the entire development for a gross bid, or he could sell them individually. I hope that he tries to do a gross sale to a development. Instead of individual lots. Then he'll, he'll hand with us, because it's not one big thing, it's a great lot. I mean, the way that they did the lawsuits, they invested in each individual parcel, because that's other tax.
And then, talking about taxes, we're waiting on our tax ticket to be converted into our billing system, and they will be mailed out on the afternoon of November twenty-sixth.
Happy Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving. Okay, personnel, anything?
Nathan passed the test for his classified waterworks operator's license, so now he's going to be working towards the class four license, which is...
He just did it six, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. So it's not going to melt, which is nice.
And four is as far as we go?
Four is all that we need to get through that, but our system's classified, it's a class four.
Okay. Chief, you got any more questions? You have your new employee?
We have a new front office employee.
Did you give it to Daniel last night?
Daniel, Daniel was, I think Daniel Yule is our new front office team member, and get this beat wet, he started at the fun time of the year with water billing, and now taxes getting ready to go out soon, so it's, it's a trial by fire starting this time of year.
Are you telling us it's a slow time of year, is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, it's maybe it works.
Okay.
And Sharon, how many people came through Trump or Trey?
What was it, eight hundred and sixty-some?
I think it was nine.
Maybe it was, maybe it was like nine hundred and, nine teens?
Yeah, something like that.
And that was, that was, that was adults and kids, but it was, as they went through, kind of kept track of like or percentages, and it was, it was a little, a little more than fifty percent for, for kids and adults that accompanied them, so. It was, it was a steady line the entire time. Great terminal.
Sharon, you got anything for, for museum?
Uh, the only thing, well, yeah, November twenty-first and twenty-second is our yard sale. And please come and buy this stuff, because our contractor is starting the remodeling beginning of this month.
What do you, what do you mean by?
Oh, let me share this with you. You all didn't know that.
That's always like was planned.
Okay, you know where the yard sale room is? We're moving that. That room will be our archive for, we're going to have a climate-controlled room. And, um, the money comes from an individual, ninety thousand dollars. And Glenn Turner is donating the air, the air conditioning heat for the climate-controlled room, because we have so many valuable documents.
Very nice.
I know. So, um, it's a lot of work. We have been working, and it's so funny, because I wear, we all wear masks, because it's still things in there from rocking or hardware. And when you take the mask off, and you're to, you know, block from the dirt, then it's weird, really.
Now, you have something for us today? You didn't, you didn't get anything last, last night?
I did, I can remember that.
I did. I was disappointed.
I bet you. You just didn't believe us, so you probably heard some of these before.
That's fine.
October the eighth, eighteen eighty-one, the cornerstone was laid for the Methodist church in Quicksburg. The Timberville Brass Band was there to provide the music. The band was almost new at that time, because it was organized eighteen seventy-nine. September nineteen forty, a small cyclone two miles west of town blew out fifteen to twenty apple trees, and blew off five thousand bushels of apples in Virgo Orchard. April nineteen forty-two, you've heard this one before. A meteor traveling from west to east occurred on the morning of the twenty-third at about two AM. It caused a crash of thunder as it passed. We now know that as a sonic boom. Now, that came from the Timberville weather records that we have thirty years of, when Vista Bowman was keeping the records, and the weather station then was at the Old Folks Home, that's where the Roman family lived. August nineteen forty-two, a record amount of rainfall for August fell. The weather station at this time was at the Old Folks Home. Very severe lightning burned a church on the fourteenth, and a barn on the seventeenth. Total loss of the building being about ten thousand dollars. Now, the church that had been when Raiders Church burned in nineteen forty-two. And I think I mentioned before, Paul and Anna Huckman told me they were coming from Forest Field down over the ridge, and they saw the bolt of lightning strike the church. So that was kind of unusual, I guess.
Now, which one's the Old Folks home? Which one's the Old Folks?
Of course, poor Wits Martin Davis. Yeah, yeah.
Is that beside it?
It's, it's torn down now.
Oh, okay, was it, okay.
Yeah.
I was making sure it wasn't like...
I think it's exactly the same spot, really. Of course, we have good pictures of the Old Folks Home too. A great big building. Thing was torn down in nineteen fifty-seven. They opened the Amoco Station in nineteen fifty-eight. That's what you call progress.
(laughing)
But, uh, yeah, that's a very big, nice, I think it was a pretty decent shape even when it tore down. That's one building that should still be there, I think, but, uh, Bud Kenny had the Amoco Station when, when they opened it there. September nineteen forty-eight, during the first nine months of forty-eight, there were ten thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven phone calls placed. The telephone switchboard was located on the upper floor of the old host office building. September nineteen forty-eight, construction of the, was underway for the new Timberville department store on Route forty-two. That's down there where the furniture store, just a couple buildings down. They moved from the corner of Church Street and Main Street. That's where it came from. September nineteen twenty-nine, school opened in Timberville with two hundred and forty-five students and attendants. September nineteen oh-nine, a bushel of apples in Timberville was fifty cents a bushel. September nineteen fifty, livestock pens owned by the Southern Railway in Timberville were to be torn down. Not enough livestock was being shipped to, to maintain them. Of course, back in the eighteen eighties and eighteen nineties, when C.C. Driver was moving almost a million dollars worth of livestock out of Timberville.
Remember that?
Yeah, and he, he was, had such a business, he built the satellite station at the Union Stockyards in Baltimore, even. I think he was the largest livestock dealer at the time in the state of Virginia. And then, one other one, the Ziegler Brothers with their black lumber business, they were exporting more lumber than any other lumber dealer in the state of Virginia. So Timberville was a blooming place back in those days.
Wow.
You can pour a lot of apples.
Yeah, you get a lot of apples with that, you're right. Thank, thanks, sir. Does council have any other business to bring forward this time? Anybody, anybody, anybody? Okay, public comment? Anybody have any public comments?
I have something new, but not to do it tonight right now. Were you asking?
Yes, I am, yeah. Introduce yourself and...
My name is Diana Popkins. I live on Virginia Avenue in Timberville. Of course, you know the tractor supply went in, but the water system has not been completed. There's huge things that water is supposed to be coming out and going down between my two neighbors, but none of that's been completed, so I'm wondering what's going on with that.
Tractor supply is waiting on easements from the neighbors, correct?
They're what?
They're waiting for easements from those neighbors?
They're not going to do that. I've already talked to them.
Not going to do the easement?
I don't think so, but I mean, they said they're not, so...
I mean, it really comes down to, they can't improve it without an easement gives permission to do it.
And then, all that water will come down into our properties again. And my property next to where you're talking gets flooded. Now, I've been dealing with this for thirty-some years, since I've been there, and he knows about it. I've talked to him several times. So all that water is coming down from all those different businesses, and it's supposed to come in there and flood, and it floods my neighbor across the street, and they have even filled in my ditches in the back. So if this does not happen, and we get a storm, then I have no ditch back there, because it was filled in by tractor supply.
Yeah, I do know that, I do know that Tractor Supply and the owners are still in conversation about those easements. I don't know where it stands, but...
Yeah, I talk to her on a, pretty much, not a daily basis, but weekly anyway. She does have a lawyer, but she says she will not do it. I don't know what would change, but my question is, if she does not, what's going to happen?
If she doesn't let him get across there, I don't know if there's a lot can happen.
Because that, so what's going to happen to all that water? Is it just going to come down even more onto my property? There's like four properties that's involved in that. And then when we get large storms, especially if we get a hurricane, and we do get them, my whole house is surrounded by water, and others is even worse than that. They're flooded underneath and everything, and like I say, I have no ditch back there to even help it to go around the property, or even go over to the ditch you all talking about. And so, anyway.
Yeah, I don't, I really don't have a good answer, because you can't, we can't really, the water's going to go at that, their ditch, and if they can't work out something, I don't, I can't have an answer for you if that works something out. I wish I had.
Okay, so there's no way we're going to be able to stop the water from coming down in there, and it should have never happened then, is the way I see it, because I do not want my house destroyed, and it's just going to get worse and worse, because everything, you got James Way, I mean, what, what is it? Is it still called James Way property up there, food line now? You got Walmart coming down through there, and then you got them. And then I also heard that you're all going to put in a subdivision, and then I heard you weren't, across the street, which would also come into our area. And I need, if they're not going to sign, I need my ditch back, so someone needs...
Was your ditch in your backyard?
Yes.
So tractor supply filled in a ditch is on your property?
Yes. Well, when they put the fence in, it was so close to my ditch, that they get really worried about where all the dirt went. And some of it is open, but it's not open enough for any type of flood to come down through there.
Well, then AC just needs to talk to them about getting closer to them.
AC, could you go over and look at it?
Yeah, well, that's what we're looking at, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I've been walking around back there so many times, I'm trying to tell you this is...
It's so closed up, I could actually throw grass down a mill across it, and I pretty much do. Some of it's there, but it's not going to handle any water like it used to.
Yeah, if you had something, if you had something there that was there before, they should, they should put it back there.
Yeah, no, they didn't, so...
What did you say?
I, I think just someone in there with some shovels, I don't know.
AC will check it out for you.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's something we can do about that, as far as the other part, that's unfortunate.
Nothing.
That's, well, it's just out of our, it's out of our control, because we can't, we can't force someone to do an easement.
And it's, and the other thing, there's so many different things that go into it, but it's, it's the natural drainage path for the water, and has been forever, or for as long as anybody's been around here. The water's always flooded, you know, down through that field, and it flowed through there even before those houses were developed. You need the houses on Virginia Avenue were developed.
I thought the houses was there first.
No, the water, the water always flooded down...
And that was way before my time, I will tell you.
Because, well, the Shingo Avenue houses were built in the nineteen, mid nineteen fifties. And, um, and then the Virginian.
I have, yeah.
In the mid nineteen sixties.
Yeah, I think my house is sixty-four.
Right, probably, yes. They were all built kind of around the same time. And they were all under the same property owner at that point when they were built. So that property owner.
It was landed, was it?
Uh, I can't remember off the top of my head. But, but, so the Shingo Avenue homes, being that old, it was still, still the same property owner. They put in a drainage line that came up and came out in your neighbor's backyard. Well, because there wasn't any houses there at that point. But the owner was just basically discharging water from his property onto his property. And that line was just left in place the entire time, even after the houses on Virginia Avenue were built.
Yeah, yeah.
But someone, AC will come in and check out here.
Yeah, and also if you, you may not notice that it's supposed to go down through, around my building. It's like a curve to lead down between my house and the other house.
So what I'll do.
So I, I'm just saying, all that needs to be.
I'll be with you and make sure that you're there.
Oh, okay.
That way you can point it out to me and I don't have to kind of guess about what it is.
Right, what needs to be done.
We, we definitely work on that.
Okay, that's all I have.
Now, do you, do you know, AC, uh, will tractor supply bump those water screens that's?
Are the silk fences?
Silk fences?
So see, the silk fences will come down. That, they're not going to be a permanent fixture. And so that's, when I went down after the last heavy rain, I took pictures of everything. And really, the silk fence was what was creating a lot of the issue because it was forcing the water.
Water coming around.
And it was running, it was, it was pulling up so much it ran around the ends.
Yes.
Whereas if the silk fence wasn't there, they realigned that drainage dish to come straight into the, where it discharges from tractor supplies property and now discharges into that natural drainage well that goes under Virginia Avenue.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
It wasn't direct, direct shot at first?
It was not, no. That was put in the wrong, back whenever that drainage easement was done, um, before. So they, they realigned it so that it doesn't line up correctly.
But now the county has approved that, that's all been.
So the, the special occupancy has been issued for the tractor supply, yeah. But the, the drainage easement part, the way I understand it, was a separate project. It was, they were permitted as separate projects. Um, and so the county's looked at the engineering, I believe, on this and has approved it, I think. I think we got its approval before. I'd have to look back at the file and see because we don't handle any of that stuff. That's, you know, the county handles all of that. So, um, we rely on the county for a lot of different things, like erosion of storm waters, erosion sediment control, the actual building code, like actual, um, construction of houses. We just do the land use part of it. And so, um, we rely on the county's expertise for the, for all the technical things.
And everything that the county does has to be the Department of Environmental Quality, D E Q standards.
Yeah, right.
Any other public comment?
What happened to the building of the company that was going to come into the Old Folks Revolve?
I reached out to them, the bait shop, that was, uh, probably three months ago. They were, there was something, they were, they hit, uh, they said there was something about trying to get the supplies in to stop it. I mean, their, their equipment, you know, like the cases and things like that. And then I believe they were, they had some family stuff they were tending to out of the country also, I believe. They said that they were still, they're still planning to open it up, but they had delayed it, so.
Any other comment? Thank you all for coming, meeting's adjourned.